Couple of minutes. All in favor? And motion tests. Anybody here for public participation? Now, is anybody in the room to judge? Do we have anybody on the line? Right along. Jason's. Public participation then discussion next steps. Monthly financials. Over to you, Don.
Oh, wonderful. Good evening, everybody. We're going to go over the July monthly financials first. I see that we have the June 2nd on the agenda. Just have to jump to page 15. The role of the July monthly financials. It's our first month out of the gate, so we're doing good. Nothing really unusual to report. Negative. The employee benefits line looks like it's over, but that's because we've netmed budgeted it and we are expecting employee contributions. Questions?
Anything you want, anything else you want to point out before I open the floor for questions?
We're in good shape.
Okay. Anybody on the committee have any questions for? I, of course, have one. Question on the salaries line. We'll get this in the other one as well, but the salaries line, are we going to be on track this year or do we expect to go so the over? I see the half million dollar increase as we budgeted for for salaries, the contractual increases, and we have a few people who didn't rehire after they were retired at age, but do we have any issues with that? We're over 1.2 million in last year's budget. Do we anticipate that to come back again this year?
We're headed in the right direction for this year and have an explanation for how we ended June. When we get to that part.
Perfect. Thank you, Don. Any questions on the July 31st? T H S projects. It's those are things that we're moving, right? T H S project expansion things that we had to move that were not included in the moving budget for.
Yes.
That included things from the middle school, right? That was all encompassing, from one middle school to the other.
Yes.
Is that right?
Fires movement throughout the summer.
All right.
So before I jump into our pre-audit year-end closeout, I just wanted to answer a few questions that the budget committee had at our June meeting. Specifically, there was a couple items about the technician line item 5112.1. This was in the previous packet, but I could just speak to it. It was only 66% assumed it was because the technician paid out of a grant, so that's why that line was low. There was another question for 5250 tuition reimbursement. I think there was a debit expense in the account for 281, and that's because the district paid for training, but there was a credit, so we received the credit back. Next line item was 5430.2, and that was a landscaping question, and there was an encumbrance for 14,500 that the code was duplicated, the work had already been done, so we closed that P O out. The other questions were around the student activities account, and there was a question that came up about the balance of the Costa Rica trip. And I did find out by reaching out to the school that they just didn't change the name to Belize, so that's why they put his money in that line item. And then the last one was, there was a question about 250 being the CTE scholarship that is in the CHS Student Activity Fund, and that was because it's paid per grant, and they were just paying for the grant to reinvest. Those were the questions that we had at the end of the meeting in June that I just wanted to fill everybody in on.
I very much appreciate it. Thank you for taking the time to give us those answers.
My pleasure. Ready for the?
Ready for the.
Okay. Okay, so it's a, you know, work in progress. We're pre-audit year-end balances, so we're still, we still have about $78,000 in conferences that we're waiting for the invoices to come in, so that's a soft close for those purchase orders. We are looking, you know, obviously to be to the good of 1.5 million, so you'll see that in the total objects viewed on page seven. Far right column, and what we did is we put the 2% nonlapsing reserve below it, and that is the ultimate amount that we can carry over into the reserve. So like I said, we're still doing a soft close right now, so we can't really, you know, pin down the number exactly, but we're to the good, definitely. We'll be having some 2% reserves carryover. Everybody have any questions there?
Just that one or the entire year in summary?
Oh, I did want to, I did want to mention your question about the salary. This year, we were able to hire a new accountant, CPA, and he had recommended that be your wages for the last pay period. So people who worked in June and got paid in July, that first week's paycheck in July should be your wages to the June pay period. So that is why you're seeing a little overage in there, but it's going to break itself in this coming year. So that was something that we did. We also in anticipation when we're hiring, we do set it at teacher level two, step five, and sometimes when we hire people, they come in a little higher, so that would be awesome, impacting that.
Anybody on the committee have any questions for Don? Start my list. Question. 54, sorry, 5342, pair of subservices.
On this one?
My pages are.
Subservices not certified here. Find us. Yes.
Yes, my question for was. Let's see, 35,000, maybe this is actually from last, the last $35,000 in the last month of the year with only half a month of subs that. Was there a reason our pair of subs went that large in a month that was clear with only half? It was just a large number for pair of subs in the last two weeks of the school year.
Yes, so I can.
Or maybe the company bills us, maybe there's a delay of the billing, I'm not sure how we pay them. Could be they bill us, you know, for the prior month.
But I'm going to double check on that.
Okay. And shout out to Dean and his team. First time that I've been on the board, we did not go over on overtime in the.
Wow, I didn't notice, but take the job.
Yes, nice job. I think it was close, Steve. I appreciate that. Everybody on the board knows that's been one of my things over the years, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, that's really, I think, what it had to do with the musical sports here.
No activities. Yep. That could have a very big part. Yep, makes sense. That makes sense.
Well played. Okay, 55801. It was administrator segments. It was just, is this our sort of travel segments? Is this the like travel or is it driving segments? It just was over. It was one of, I looked down the list and see what's gone over by a fair percentage when I asked the question.
Yes, we have a lot of administrators and teachers taking advantage of conferences.
And 5622. Electricity, we've talked about this a little bit, but it was $216,000 in one bus.
Yeah, so I'm assuming that's what the new building expenses. We are going to start tracking the electricity, so we know what to expect forward of that.
Forward to that. It was just concerning, 216,000 trapped for a world of hurt in the budget line item. I think that is all I have. It was important you haven't already covered. Anybody else? Glenn, your, look at your pages.
Yeah, trying to figure out different.
Anybody else? Mr. Lafferty here. Welcome to the meeting. Did you have any questions?
No. Sorry for being late.
I think that's it, Don. Thank you very much for the update. When do you expect these to be finalized, audited? When do we actually have to happen to the city as finalized documents?
So we're in the middle of the audit right now. We're also in the middle of the E F S report with the state. Usually they audit tight though, back in September for this, and then the numbers are usually solid by December. It's one of the final audits. So, but our soft close is going to be done probably next week.
When do we actually make the transfer to the nonlapse for the actual dollar amount? I see the dollar amounts are shown differently because they're kind of in flux. When do we actually decide to make that transfer?
That's a big question. So we're going to have to wait until the audit is complete, so we know the actual number that is agreed upon and closed out, and I think it will be. That transfer probably.
Thank you very much. Right. Topics for future meetings. The obvious ones, right? We'll talk about the electricity from high school if we can. We'll talk about the monthly financials. Maybe a quick update on your audit. If it's at a spot where there's anything to share. Anybody have anything that's in the budget?
Happened with credits from the electricity. It's going to get locked into the building committee.
My case is that the city, I believe, the grants from resource, I think it went to the city, and then the city was going to disperse them as a part of the building project for additional items, is my understanding from building committee.
Yeah, that hasn't happened.
It was supposed to be in fall, I think it was September, October, November.
Maybe I stole my number from what I mentioned, but I'm feeling it.
Our, our particular board's not going to see any of that money. The city was going to take it last time due, they were going to take some of the permitting fees that we were in disagreement over, the sewer expense, one of those items is going to come out of it, and the rest was going to go towards supplemental items for the building committees, field term project, the building, things like that. Anything else for next meeting? Just anything else you want to know, just let us know and we'll coordinate.
Great, great. Thanks, everybody.
Excellent. Comments for the good of the order? Start with Jason.
Ready for us, ready for the new year.
Yeah.
Sad I couldn't get into the building today. I was not here, I hope you're there tomorrow.
Fantastic. Mr. Knight?
Well said.
Hey, good luck, everybody, on the school year this year. Did they come together? A little bit of student getting back to work, and we appreciate all the effort that goes into it. Look forward to starting that other successfully in your charge of public schools. You need to thank it.
Thanks very much. Thanks. Some good chair.
I'm trying to break the record.
Good meeting.
Didn't see it down there.
Good meeting. Looking forward to the start.
That's going to get to the building. Anybody else? Marissa, Rachel? Gosh, all right. In a motion for adjournment. All those in favor? Maybe it is adjourned. 547. If everyone could please rise for the pledge of allegiance, this flag is in the corner there. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the roll this time. It's greatest hour for a moment, Mr. Bird.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Toria.
Here.
Mr. Crum.
Here.
Mr. Fred.
Here.
Mr. Uplita.
I'm here.
Ms. Honus, excuse. Mr. Kispin.
Here.
Mr. Knight.
Here.
Mr. Pup.
Here.
Eric Carbone. Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Ms. Leff.
Here.
Mr. Burgo.
Here.
Ms. Shelby.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Mr. Wilson.
That's that. I have, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong agenda, this is the right one. Okay, school, community service, and public participation, is there anyone here online who wishes to address the board? Ah, yes, that's right.
So, just here.
No, I have to go backwards anyway, because I missed the approval of the agenda. Is anyone seeking any additions, subtractions, adjustments to the agenda? Okay, if not, I will hear a motion to approve the agenda. So, is there a second?
Second.
So, discussion, all those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
That is, I'm sort of checking these notes, I don't miss them. Last call, if anyone's here to address the board. Okay, so I'll skip the long paragraph, and we will dive right into reports and information, starting with the superintendent.
So, we've been very busy, obviously, at Central Office this summer. Not having a July meeting to address this fully, but officially welcoming Rissa to her new role at Central Office. She's an executive assistant, she's been doing an amazing job, and she's working around the clock. So, welcome to the event here. I want to thank Dean and Rachel and their respective teams for doing an enormous amount of work to get all of our buildings ready. Not only the two new buildings at Central Office, but all of the buildings to get the proper technology and to get everything clean and ready to welcome our students. We're really excited. I also want to thank Kim and her team, the HR team, for doing what will be onboarding and to get everyone vetted and ready to rock and roll, and that means all staff. And I know she's excited to host her new teacher orientation tomorrow, so that will happen, so we're really excited about that. I want to thank Sue Ferguson and her team, they did a wonderful job with curriculum writing this summer to ensure that all curriculum across all grade levels is really coming along and being implemented with fidelity. We can't wait to see it in action. Our summer school program was a success this year. Assistant Superintendent Ferguson will be giving the full report on that at the next sitting committee meeting. Mr. Kispin, we love those reports, so she will be giving that for you there. I had the opportunity to attend Hal's backpack giveaway with other members of the team. It really just showcased strong community support, strong school spirit as we prepare for the academic year. Obviously, we took some great photos and pictures on Facebook up the hall to see. It was a wonderful day, just to kind of interact and really talk to our families and our students. And a highlight for me was when several students came up and actually said they missed me and they couldn't wait to be back and see me. So, real excited, and I do miss them as well, so looking forward to that. Another thing I'd like to share, I know I shared it with the board, and we put it on our Facebook as well. I was the guest on Fox 61 News last week where I talked about back to school and all the redistricting and everything great that's happening in Torrance. It was a really nice, nice invite that I took. It was glad that I took it, thank you. I'm also excited to share some really exciting hot off the press news. As I shared with the board last year, I was honored to be asked to speak at the national conference last year, and I actually received the call, and they would like me to once again speak at the national superintendent conference in October. And what we're talking about is our success even while receiving a very, very, very lean budget. So, they noted that, and they want us to talk about it, and I will once again represent and proudly and share our story and show our success. So, real happy to be doing that in October. Today, we had a wonderful admin retreat, all our admins came, we actually had a great PD for all, a lot of laughs, but a lot of great art. And they are now starting to pass right mission improvement plans after receiving all of the information. So, really excited about that. Next week, we have our convocation, I know all board members did receive an invite, but I am also going to formally invite you, if you would like to come, at 8 o'clock next Tuesday at the Torrance International Summit. We're also looking forward to welcoming not only our staff and convocation and PD, but all of our wonderful students on September 2nd. We can't wait, you know, we have missed them, and I know all of the hard work and preparation we made for them. So, we thank the board for their support, and it's been a crazy amount of work this summer, but it is well worth it. We can't wait to see their faces and welcome them off the buses. And last but not least, because the next time I will report to you will be after that, but obviously, we will be anxious and waiting to see them in their classrooms, our teachers, our students, and see everyone in action. So, we're really looking forward to a great start of the school year. I know the preparation has seemed endless for all of us at Central Office, but it will come to a culmination in really exciting time next week. So, if there's any questions, I'm glad to take them, but I also wanted to thank you all for your patience and understanding as we try to get this thing rolling. So, thank you.
Thank you. Fortunately, I won't be able to make convocation because I am the least senior person in my office and get last pick for vacations, so next week. But I do want to touch on, as we get ready to go back to school, there's been some folks in the community concerned about, you know, where they're going with the redistricting. And I know we're doing our level best to communicate with folks, and so I just want to kind of touch on that maybe here in the public meeting, if there's any, anything that maybe is forthcoming or, you know, adjustments that we've been delayed on, just generally where we're at with making sure folks get where they need to go. So, it's a hundred percent.
Absolutely, so all of the communications have been prepared, the events today, and all of those communications are resting about via parents, where several have already went out from certain, from different administrators. Others were kind of just waiting on some pieces in terms of scheduling issue. We did have, which is a real nice problem to have, and I don't even consider it a problem, it was bad work, but we've had a real good influx of people moving into the community. So, while we are trying our best to onboard every new registration that we can, that also comes with some scheduling concerns at our secondary levels. So, some of our secondary folks have just delayed their message to make sure that it comes along with us, but those will be out by the end of this weekend for these.
So, any, you know, I do know some people I've received them, because I've seen them, but anybody who has yet to receive a communication from their school will receive one very soon.
Absolutely.
Excellent, that's all I have, does anyone else have anything for the superintendent? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, we'll pass it over to Kim for the human resources.
Thank you. So, you have, you had already gotten the year-end results in June, so what I provided for you this evening is kind of a recap of what we've done in the HR office this summer. So, you can see that we had a total of 48 teacher vacancies, 18 paras, and 37 classified vacancies. Some of that is because of retirees, some of it is because of the redistricting, so that's just the total number of positions that needed to be filled, and then some of those were filled by internal people. So, this just kind of gives you the total number of everything we had to do this summer, and then you have the list of kind of where we still are. Built a couple of those vacancies, and it's a moving target every day, but we feel really good about where we're going to be. Tomorrow's going to be a very exciting event, because we have our teachers and our paras that join us for new staff orientation now. We have one day where we bring them together, and everybody comes and speaks, like every member of cabinet comes and shares what they do and what's going on in their department, so that everybody has exactly what they need for the first day with students, so. We have 28 total new hired teachers, we have 10 paras, and then 15 other staff members, my occupational therapists, physical therapists, we have an accountant, secretary, custodian, so the 15 is just a variety of other positions. We do have three resident teachers that we are supporting this year at three different schools.
So 4:00 PM. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. This flag is in the corner there. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call the roll this time. It's great as Alan for a moment. Mr. Bird.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Yeah.
Toria, here. Mr. Crun.
Here.
Mr. Fred.
Yeah.
Mr. Youthelita.
I'm here.
Ms. Honus, excuse. Mr. Kispka.
Here.
Mr. Knight.
Yeah.
Mr. Putnam.
Here.
Eric Carbone. Dr. Baker.
Yeah.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yeah.
Ms. Le.
Yeah.
Mr. Burgo.
Here.
Michelle.
Yeah.
Ms. Me.
Thank you.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
That's that. I have, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong agenda. This is the right one. Okay, school, community service, and public participation. Is there anyone here online who wishes to address the board? Ah, yes, that's right.
So just here.
No, I have to go backwards anyway, because I missed the approval of the agenda. Is anyone seeking any additions, subtractions, adjustments to the agenda? Okay, if not, I will hear a motion to approve the agenda. So, is there a second?
Second.
So, discussion, all is in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Who's opposed?
Hi.
That is, I'm sort of checking these notes, I don't miss them. Last call, if anyone is here to address the board. Okay, so I'll skip the little paragraph, and we will dive right into reports and information, starting with the superintendent.
So, we've been very busy, obviously, at Central Office this summer. Not having a July meeting to address this fully, but officially welcoming Rissa to her new role at Central Office. She's the executive assistant. She's been doing an amazing job and she's working in the box and helping to event her. I want to thank Dean and Rachel and their respective teams for doing an enormous amount of work to get all of our buildings ready. Not only the two new buildings at Central Office, but all of the buildings to get the proper technology and to get everything clean and ready to welcome our students. We're really excited. I also want to thank Kim and her team, the HR team, for doing what will be onboarding and to get everyone vetted and ready to rock and roll. And that means all staff, and I know she's excited to host her new teacher orientation tomorrow, so that will happen, so we're really excited about that. I want to thank Sue Ferguson and her team. They did a wonderful job with curriculum writing this summer to ensure that all curriculum across all grade levels is really coming along and being implemented with fidelity. We can't wait to see it in action. Our summer school program was a success this year. Assistant Superintendent Ferguson will be giving a full report on that at the next committee meeting. Mr. Kispka, we love those reports, so she will be giving that for you there. I had the opportunity to attend Hal Backpack giveaway with other members of the team. It really just showcased strong community support, strong school spirit as we prepare for the academic year. Obviously, we took some great photos and pictures on Facebook up the hall to see. It was a wonderful day, just to kind of interact and really talk to our families and our students. And a highlight for me was when several students came up and actually said they missed me and they couldn't wait to be back and see me. So, real excited, and I do miss them as well, so looking forward to that. Another thing I'd like to share, I know I shared it with the board and we put it on our Facebook as well. I was the guest on Fox 61 News last week where I talked about back to school and all the redistricting and everything great that's happening in Torrington. It was a really nice, nice invite that I took.
Very successful.
Thank you. I'm also excited to share some really exciting hot off the press news. As I shared with the board last year, I was honored to be asked to speak at the national conference last year. And I actually received the call, and they would like me to once again speak at the national superintendent conference in October. What we're talking about is our success even while receiving a very, very, very lean budget. So, they noted that, and they want us to talk about it, and I will once again represent Torrington proudly and share our story and show our success. So, real happy to be doing that in October. Today, we had a wonderful admin retreat. All our admins came. We actually had a great PD for all, a lot of laughs, but a lot of great work. And they are now starting to assess, write mission improvement plans after receiving all of the information. So, really excited about that. Next week, we have our convocation. I know all board members did receive an invite, but I am also going to formally invite you, if you would like to come, at 8 o'clock next Tuesday at the Torrington Asian Meeting. We're also looking forward to welcoming not only our staff and convocation and PD, but all of our wonderful students on September 2nd. We can't wait. We have missed them, and I know all of the hard work and preparation we must for them. We thank the board for your support, and it's been a crazy amount of work this summer, but it is well worth it. We can't wait to see their faces and welcome them off the buses. And last but not least, because the next time I will report to you will be after that, but obviously, we will be anxious and waiting to see them in their classrooms, our teachers, our students, and see everyone in action. Really looking forward to a great start of the school year. I know the preparation has seemed endless for all of us at Central Office, but it will come to a culmination in really exciting time next week. So, if there's any questions, I'm glad to take them, but I also wanted to thank you more for your patience and understanding as we kind of get this thing rolling. So, thank you.
Thank you. Fortunately, I won't be able to make convocation because I am the least senior person in my office and get last pick for vacations, so next week. But I do want to touch on, as we get ready to go back to school, there's been some folks in the community concerned about, you know, where they're going with the redistricting. And I know we're doing our level best to communicate with folks, and so I just want to kind of touch on that maybe here in the public meeting. If there's any, anything that maybe is forthcoming or, you know, adjustments that we've been delayed on, just generally where we're at with making sure folks get where they need to go. Those are the members.
Absolutely. So, all of the communications have been prepared after the events today, and all of those communications are resting about via parents, where several have already went out from certain, from different administrators. Others were kind of just waiting on some pieces in terms of scheduling issue. We did have, which is a real nice problem to have, and I don't even consider it a problem, it was bad work, but we've had a real good influx of people moving into the community. So, while we are trying our best to onboard every new registration that we can, that also comes with some scheduling concerns at our secondary levels. So, some of our secondary folks have just delayed their message to make sure that it comes along with us, but those will be out by the end of this weekend for these.
Excellent. So, I mean, you know, and I do know some people I've received them because I've seen them, but anybody who has yet to receive a communication from their school will receive one very soon.
Absolutely.
Excellent. That's all I have. Does anyone else have anything for the superintendent? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, we'll pass it over to Kim for the human resources.
Thank you. So, you have, you had already gotten the year-end results in June. So, what I provided for you this evening is kind of a recap of what we've done in the HR office this summer. So, you can see that we had a total of 48 teacher vacancies, 18 paras, and 37 classified vacancies. Some of that is because of retirees, some of it is because of the redistricting. So, that's just the total number of positions that needed to be filled, and then some of those were filled by internal people. So, this just kind of gives you the total number of everything we had to do this summer, and then you have a list of kind of where we still are. Filled a couple of those vacancies, and it's a moving target every day, but we feel really good about where we're going to be. Tomorrow's going to be a very exciting event because we have our teachers and our paras that join us for new staff orientation now. We have one day where we bring them together, and everybody comes and speaks, like every member of cabinet comes and shares what they do and what's going on in their department so that everybody has exactly what they need for the first day with students. So, we have 28 total new hired teachers. We have 10 paras and then 15 other staff members. My occupational therapists, physical therapists, we have an accountant, secretaries, custodians, so the 15 is just a variety of other positions. We do have three resident teachers that we are supporting this year at three different schools, so we're excited about that. And then I wanted to kind of give you where we landed for our staff turnover based on the resignations and retirements and things that we received over the summer. And what is really exciting is that our para turnover, our cap turnover, our teacher turnover, and our secretary turnover are all significantly better than in the previous years. So, we're retaining our people, people are happy, and they're staying. So, we're excited about that. Is there any questions about the general HR report? And I'll go on to my second question.
I have one question. Is that okay, everybody?
Yeah, right. Yep.
Ken, I think, whenever I get somebody in town who came back to Torrington looking for a job, I pass it along to the, the chair people. But the resident teachers, is it, and this is really the board can think about this too. I just always thought that we should try to have a, some mechanism to, to show preference to local kids who've come back to work in the school system and live in Torrington. I'm just throwing an idea out there, but are the resident teachers that we, we go through, are they, is it preferred for Torrington? Grad, high school graduates that come back to teach, or is there no mechanism to, to use that as a preference?
The mechanism is that it's a preference that they are, that they're Torrington employees. So, there are paras or our tutors. That's the group that we have right now. Two of them were paras with us and one was a tutor. Because they have to have a degree in order to be a resident teacher. So.
I think he, wait, what?
No, no.
Gary, I think you, she misunderstood, you're misunderstanding, I think his question is more, the resident teachers are at, is in a local resident area? And I think that's the question that you're trying to ask about.
That's correct, yeah.
Consideration given to local graduate. That's, that's where he was going.
Yeah, no, 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 I understood the question. I'm just saying it's not that they're, the preference is given to Torrington residents. The preference is given that they're Torrington employees. So, that's, that's where the.
No, 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 that's not the question. No, the resident program, no, two different things. He's not asking about the resident program. He's not asking about this. Okay.
I thought he was.
No, I thought he was. He's asking, no, he, he's asking about preference given to residents of Torrington.
For just general teaching positions or for the resident teacher?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, that's correct.
Right, Gary, you're talking about the graduates.
That's correct.
Graduated certified teachers.
For all hiring.
For all hiring or just for the resident teacher program? I'm sorry.
Not.
I would say all, I would say all hires for people who are residents. I mean, it's just an idea, but there's a lot of people, and maybe it's just my kids are getting to the point where they're friends. And people are all.
We do try to make sure, I'm sorry, Gary, I don't want to interrupt you, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
Torrington grads, we always try to make sure that they get interviews. I mean, that, that's what I can say, that, that they get, they absolutely, we encourage our staff to interview Torrington grads. We always want to make sure that we're trying to grow our own. That's our whole goal. I mean, I'm working with.
That's what it's getting at.
Child care development teacher to try to make sure that we're encouraging our high school students to maybe go into education and then trying to work with them and keep them kind of warm through their four years of college. So, yes, I do think we do encourage them. We do give preference to make sure that they always get an interview. That's the goal.
Okay.
Yes.
But is it possible, and again, this isn't probably different tonight, but to think about, like we do with state contracts or city contracts and everything else, give the look, the kids who've come back that got their degrees some sort of preferential score, maybe it's 5% or whatever. I don't know if you use scores, but something to think about. It's, it's for a future discussion, I think, but.
Absolutely.
Well, all right.
Definitely look at that.
Yeah.
Ken, what's the state average for turnover in a school district? Do you happen to know, or is there a report on that?
I don't know it off the top of my head, but I would say it's probably around the 10% range.
So, we're about 14 then?
Yeah.
Do we, do we have a lot of retirees? I'm just trying to figure out, obviously, it's been, as you pointed out, this is better than last year, which saw some of the team for keeping the number down. But if we're above the state average, like we struggled years ago with our special ed, we're above the state average, what steps are we taking to improve that turnover? Or is it just that 80% of that was staff who retired this year, which sometimes they, they retire in batches? And what, what do you attribute to the higher than average turnover?
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I think that we're in the range right now. Like I said, our teacher, our teacher range, we were at 9.74%, and that's under 10%.
Sure. Overall, we're about 14.
You're talking about all staff? So, I don't know the average of that. I know teacher turnover is about 10%. That's, that's the metric that really, as far as the rest of the employees, like if you include para and cap turnover as far as a statewide number, I'm sure it's much, much higher. Because that's usually about 25 to 30% turnover in those areas. They, they tend to have very high turnover. So, I, I, you know, if I, I could certainly look into that for next month and kind of give you an assessment, but I would say based on our assessment, we are significantly under the state average. So, what we are doing is constantly working on our retention strategies. We're working on things like our wellness strategies and anything we can do that keep people here. Adding things like the recently negotiated attendance incentive, things that are unique to Torrington that keep people in Torrington because it is a better opportunity here when they stay here. So, that's what we're doing to continuously try to keep that turnover number at a reasonable number. It's just working on employee engagement. How do we help people, you know, checking in on people, doing new teacher surveys to see what people like, doing our exit surveys and looking at that information. All of those things are things that we look at to try to make sure that we are retaining our best people.
Thank you. Anyone? So, it's.
I just, I just want to comment, I'm sorry, I distracted for a minute, but I, I do want to comment, to your point, you did clarify this, Jeff, but in just the five years that I've been on the board are, I, I actually recall having heated discussions about the turnover in the district, and we do not have that problem anymore. And I just want to make sure that that's very clear, that we had significant, you're right, like 50%, 48% was ridiculous.
There, there are districts right now that have 20-plus openings for teachers right now. We are just not enough.
Right.
They're a respectable board.
Yes, very, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, to that point, not to bash my employer, but the city of Danbury's public schools have a pretty serious retention and hiring problem that is, is crippling their school districts. So, almost all of their teachers are teaching six classes instead of five. They're right at their contractual maximum for class sizes, et cetera, et cetera. So, that we just have that problem. Anyone else? Okay, let's dive into this.
Okay, so, Mr. Putnam had asked, then I kind of looked into some assessments would be attendance incentives. So, I provided with you with some information, looking at those absence reasons, that are the absence reasons that would impact the attendance incentive. And you can see that in all areas, except for one group, that, you know, it definitely had a positive impact on the absences. And I think you may recall throughout the year, as I presented the absences, I had mentioned that our long-term absences for the paras, we had a unusually high number of longer-term absences, and some of that is impacted by that because if they exhaust their FMLA, then the absences get coded as just sick personal or something like that. So, it kind of impacts this number. Yeah, so, so just, I would anticipate that it's going to be different this year. So, I guess what I'm saying, I, I think we had an unusual year for the paras, so.
24, 25 was the first full year.
Correct.
Where all of our units had. Yes.
Correct. And then I gave you kind of, I think the other question would be how many people got it? So, I wanted to give you the total. So, you can see 201 people got it for just one quarter. 95 people got it for two quarters. 67 people got it for three of the quarters, and 32 people received all four quarters.
So, with regard to the long-term absences for the paras, how many would we attribute to, say, workers?
I would have to go back and get you the exact number, but I recall one month, there was, we had 10 people out, 10 paras out in one month that, that were doing workers' compensation. Some stuff that happened then.
Right, well, that's kind of what I'm getting at, is I think maybe as we think about absences and attendance, one thing that affects not only our employees pretty seriously, but also are these metrics that we want to track, I would say, is paras being, you know, especially programmed paras, behavioral programmed paras. There's something that, that, you know, it's a secret that it's election season, right? So, a lot of us are out campaigning, including me, and I talk to a lot of these paras out on the street when I maybe go to the old way this year. And it's something that almost every one of them will bring up. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know the scope, right? But I think maybe as we look at that in conjunction with absence, it's something that could be helpful for the board to see is kind of how many of our folks are getting hurt on the job. You know, that's relevant for retention and also for our budget and attendance purposes. How, how many days are they off work because of that?
Sure. And we can, we can get you some of that information. What I can tell you is that, you know, we recognize that that's been an ongoing pattern, and there are some really exciting things that I think are happening between the Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Student Services to be able to affect some of the things that are causing some of those effects.
So.
I, I think it's going to be, see a different result.
I, I certainly hope so for many, many reasons. Now, would you say, just as I look at the recipes, are there other factors that might have caused, say, a 23.45% drop in the secretaries? Absences in terms of, you know, say, I'm speaking generally, right? I don't want to identify anybody, but was there a lot of turnover? And now there are a lot of new people who maybe aren't as absent as much as other people could have been? Or do we think that a lot of this is attributable to the attendance incentive or something like that?
I think it's somewhere in the, that would be what I would say. I think, I think some of the groups really took the attendance incentive with a really strong emphasis and, and were really attentive to it. So, I do think, I think it's somewhere in the middle.
And my last question is, so we have the total cost, which really is the most comparable, 180,000. Do we have a sense? You know, let's say if we take the paras out of the debt because we think that there are some issues that really skew that. If we were to look at savings on teacher absences as the largest group of employees left, do we have a sense maybe of like savings, like what does it cost on average when a teacher calls out of work? We have to pay them their sick time, which they're contractually entitled to, and, and then we have to pay the sub versus if we pay that teacher $1,000 for, you know, being, being in school. Do we have a sense of what savings might have been? Maybe this is cost neutral?
I, I think it's right for this year, you know, I would say it was cost neutral. What I can tell you is that we had the number of absence requests for both of the, for the teachers, for just the teachers, went down for the 24, 25 school year, but the number of fills went up. So, so when we talk about the cost, right, like so, if our costs, if our fill rates are going up, even if we're having better absenteeism, we're still going to have a cost in subs. So, so sometimes you're not going to see that as much. The other issue, you know, that everyone has to remember is that minimum wage hasn't increased significantly over the last eight years. And so, even if our fill rates are staying the same, you know, our costs might be going up because that minimum wage is going up because we have to raise our substitute costs because they're pretty much at minimum wage. And, and in order to be competitive, we've got to raise the sub costs, and then that creates additional. So, so there's some other factors that affect it.
Right.
So, we have to be a little more obsessive on that.
And, and just to that, one other thing popped into my head. So, with regarding fill rates and costs, you know, anything not filled by ESS, it's often filled by another teacher in the building. So, correct, remind me, is there, do they get paid extra if we take their prep period and they can cover classes? They do, right? Okay, all right. So, we can at least still try and reckon some, you know, not exact dollar that we made of savings, but.
So, overall for the year, what I figured out for the number was there, there was 1,535 less jobs available that were requested, teacher and para total, and 701 more subs were created. So, that's, that's the overall number, kind of looking at that cost association.
Oh, that's a good.
That's teachers and paras together.
That's a good place to start because we can figure out what an absence costs and what a sub costs, make those numbers.
Yeah, so I did look at those numbers just to kind of get a sense of that.
Great. You wanted to add something to that, I'm going to add a little bit of discussion.
I would be curious at some point to see what the, what percentage of people, what the number of people would have qualified for the attendance incentive the year before, before we offered it. It would actually be really good, it takes, it takes out the variation, right, of, you know, the fill rates and all those things, just hey, we did it last year and only 32 teachers decided they could do it all here alone. Yeah, the year before it was nine, so it's a huge impact. We got, that's probably the easier way to make it a simple number. What, who would have qualified before we even had the incentive first, once we offered it? And to your point, we had 337 less days of absenteeism amongst the entire group. There are educators out, so I'll let you do the math on that one afterwards, but you can get a approximate cost on what a sub would be if you run it through.
Okay, anybody that's.
I don't know if this is nitpicking or noteworthy point, but the Q1 number is half of your total attendance incentives. Make note that, that incentive really starts, Q1 is measured July 1st, September 30th or something, does that affect?
Yeah.
Please have a show of the work with the first.
Correct. Something to consider.
Yes, the next negotiations, yeah, I forgot the date. It shouldn't be a Q1, it should be the first month of school. You know, or not even, I don't even know how you want to do that, but.
Well, we can, we can figure that out in the negotiating session and not negotiate.
No. Yes, it has to be discussed.
That it's worth bringing up. What else? Okay. Is that it for you, Kim?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, yes.
We have special education and student services report.
Good evening. I appreciate the time. This evening, the report that I'm going to have is just to kind of develop where we are for six weeks of onboarding thus far. To start, we've been collaborating with special ed supervisors and partnering with them to align our priorities, support our onboarding and strengthen like our own well-serve delivery model, taking a look at how we can do that best. We've been working very hard on staff recruitment and hiring. We're leading interviewing procedures, hiring teachers, nurses, social workers, paraprofessionals to fill our vacancies and ensure strong qualified staffing is in place for the beginning of the year. We've also been creating professional learning for educators. We've developed and launched some onboarding sessions for new hires, ongoing professional development for special ed teachers and for the paraprofessionals. And lastly, we've done a partnership with the Office of Teaching and Learning in which we've been co-designing and implementing professional learning to enhance our construction practices across the board for high-fa construction for all students.
Great. Anyone have any questions, Dr. Baker? Okay, thank you. Office of Teaching and Learning Services.
Wash, can you bring it up on the screen? I think all I can see of what was said today. That's maybe to the board. Hi, everybody. My apologies, this did not go into the packet. I was all set to give you sort of a broad overview of the assessments of the state this spring when Michael and I received an email along with other superintendents across the state reminding us that they are not for the public. Sharing, yeah. So, so we're not sharing any of the smarter balance or any of the state assessments tonight. So, we will wait for those to be released hopefully by the end of this month or early September. And we typically do that for school, anyway. So, this is really just where we left off in the spring, but we thought that it really was something to kind of, I don't know, to the district's horn about a little bit because if you think about this, so this is our internal district progress monitoring assessment. So, we use something called the DIBELS, which is a state approach assessment in grades K through 3, and it really, that's a reading test for K through 3. We also use star rating in math. What you, what I'm going to talk about just very briefly tonight is K through 8. We did not administer those internal assessments, those particular progress monitoring assessments in high school last year after a conversation, lengthy conversation with our alliance liaison who felt. who felt that we were, our high school kids were suffering from testing fatigue because of all of the SAT, the PSAT, these three times a year assessments, the AP test, the unit test, et cetera, et cetera. We are having a conversation about going back to the progress monitoring at the high school this year and just tweaking our assessment calendar to drive it. We still need that data, but honestly, we weren't getting reliable numbers from our, our high school kids because they weren't taking it seriously. It was just, all they did was test. So anyway, some of the highlights here that we're really excited about in kindergarten, our kind, and this is all kindergarten. It's not working out by school here. We can do that sort of thing at school improvement, but just for tonight's purposes, in kindergarten, we had a fifty-point jump from fall to spring. I mean, those kids are, are primed, right? They're ripe and they're ready, so you expect a, a huge growth or a large jump, but that's something that we haven't seen in many, many years. So we are so excited by that first grade seventeen-point jump, second grade twelve-point jump. Third grade had a, a miss of two points. That's, I'm told, not statistically significant, but we, obviously we want to see growth and we didn't. They were, they were kind of stagnant. But fourth grade, nine points, you know, fifth grade sixteen, these are amazing for Torrington. Given where we have been in recent years, where you all know, we've seen a steady decline. And as we go up in the grades, we're so excited because even though it's only a three-point growth in six, seven, and eight, it's not a drop. And we've seen ten fifty-point drops in recent years. So this is progress. We're very excited. In math, similar fourteen percent. We don't test in math in kindergarten, we don't have that test. Fourteen percent, you know, fourteen points in grade two, nine, fourteen, sixteen. I, you know, we're, we're pretty excited about this. We have a lot more to do, we have a lot of work to do, we recognize that, but we just wanted to share. We're very happy and we think we're headed in the right direction, I guess, is the bottom line. Right? So I don't know if anybody has any questions about this. There'll be more to come. Last year, if you remember, I gave you all a binder, disaggregated by subgroup. We can do all that again. We have it, we're just not able to share it in a public forum.
Yeah, I know we've implemented the new program. When does that, like, when's the cutoff for that? Or does that go all the way through?
Sixth grade.
Sixth grade. So if, when you were saying, because you've, you've been with us for quite some time, when you were saying this hasn't happened in many years, would you say this kind of fifty percent jump hasn't happened since we used to teach phonics learning?
Correct. No figure, yeah.
Great, no, I want, I want to give you the credit for that. I think that's important. We have changed to, back to the model that we all knew would work and that we all.
We all agree with, yeah.
So I just wanted to bring that up. And anybody else have anything? Looking forward myself to, I like, I like binders a little bit.
Yeah, it's very exciting.
As a municipal bureaucrat, nothing makes me happy.
And then just, just another, just a little shout out to all of the folks who worked so hard this summer. The summer learning program was four weeks, July eighth, July thirty-first, and it was all at Torrington School. We were very cozy at Torrington School. We had three hundred and seven, and I'll get into this more if you want to, Mr. Cisco, if you'd like. How many were invited, that sort of thing, how many actually showed up, how many got kicked out, we could go into all of that. But what we ended up, I, what I have for you here is we have a total of three hundred and seventy-seven students who completed successfully completed the summer program. And the breakdown was K to five, we had a hundred and twenty-nine, six through eight, fifty-five, nine through twelve, eighty. We had an English language learner program that was spanning the grades from K to twelve, which was predominantly for what we call newcomers to the district, many of whom have very little English. So that's geared toward really just keeping the kids at heart in English throughout the summer. We had forty-three students attend for the entire program. And then the ESY, the extended school year program, which falls under the Office of Student Services, that was pre-K through age twenty-two, we had seven students attend, so a total of three hundred and seventy-seven kids. It was very busy, it was very happy. Very successful, so more to come on that.
About the summer school. Of those nine as well, how many were grade twelve making up credits? Because they were unable to graduate in the spring and have made up those credits in our summer program that are now.
Yes, we do know, but I don't have it with me, but I want to say no. But I could, but it was something like that, that there were, I think we had nine students who were unable to participate in graduation.
And that, that completed the program that are now, so what?
We did also offer, invited those students to August graduation.
Okay, that was a nice question. Was, was, was there a plan to?
There wasn't a plan.
Great, but, but we made the option to enable to the students and families.
Yeah.
Jeff.
Can I, can I ask one quick question?
Hold on here, Jeff has a floor.
Is this a combination of our younger kids who we tried to help through the summer to eliminate the summer slide? And some of those, maybe they're not metric based, but they can build a bit of extra help to keep it through the summer and then also credit recovery for the resource.
The high school is purely credit recovery. So the high school kids who come, come because they have to come because they need to recover credit, right? Six through eight students came because they had failed the class, one or more. The K to five is a little bit more of what we first said. It's more of, okay, we need to keep these kids, the momentum going over this summer because they're kind of teetering. Or it's basically it's that, you know, we wish that we put them in school for twelve months for some of our young learners, yes.
How long have we offered this summer program? How many years coming up?
We didn't start, we only, until, I want to say five years. Prior to that, we just did ESY, so that was driven by IEPs. We've only been having a summer school, and we did credit recovery for high school, we've always done that, but we never did K through eight till open, yeah.
I wonder how much of that has had? A lot of those test scores to keeping these kids who are sliding, keeping them engaged over the summer. I wonder if that has also a positive effect to test scores.
Well, we would hope, right? Because this, it doesn't come without cost, right? If this is, yeah, yeah, so the return on our investment, absolutely, yes.
Anyone else? Oh, right, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, so, Sue, I haven't seen you in a while. A, a couple of teachers had good things to say about summer school. They felt as if, I'm going to ask if you think it's the case, but the, the fact that the kids knew they had to go and the parents understood there were consequences if they didn't this year versus some other years in the past. Not last year, I don't think, but other years in the past, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't determined ahead of time that they needed to do X, Y, and Z in order to continue to move forward. It was, they were like, they were led to, to run and run and not show up sometimes. But this, this year I heard from teachers that it was smooth, kids seemed to be engaged. And, and two teachers who are very senior said that the, the attitude of the kids was different than it has been in the past. And, and they enjoyed being with the summer school kids because they were open to learning, but, or at least seem engaged in learning. Do you think that's the case or how did you read it or how did anybody else read it that was in the administrative level?
Well, since the board adopted the, the social promotion policy, it has, we make, we make sure that in middle and high school, students and families are educate, educated about that policy right from the first day of school. They're told, you know, it's, it's communicated in many different forms. Teachers, you know, kind of go over it with their students the first week of school and say, hey, just so you know, because as you said, it, it had been a little loosey-goosey in years past, right? It's not like that anymore. I, I can say to you, this year in particular, because we were all in one place, it was, it was very tight and I know Dean probably wasn't thrilled with the whole idea. It was, it was a very, a lot of kids in one place. But one of the benefits of that is that we were able to very, very carefully and tightly supervise what was happening. And I can tell you, and I, I don't want to take away from school improvement because we can really dig into this, but every, kids were not allowed to miss. If you missed a session, you got, you got, you were out because there were only sixteen.
That's what I heard.
You were only sixteen, it was only sixteen days. It ran Monday through Thursday for four weeks. And if you didn't make it, and you knew this ahead of time, families knew ahead of time, I kid can't miss the day or too bad. So, so yes, there were very high expectations. It sounds like I'm being fresh about it, I'm not, but because if, if you're going to make up, right? If you're going to recover a course that took a semester, let's say, in, in four weeks, it's going to be rigorous. The standards are going to be high, the expectations are, are there, you're going to show up on time, you're going to sit down and you're going to do what you need to do to earn the credit. And, and that's how it was done. And phone calls were made if there were behavior problems, and we didn't have many this year, I will say. But those few behavior problems were handled as they would be handled during the course of the school year. We don't, in, in fact, I think we were probably even stricter because we didn't have the time or the, the resources to deal with that.
Well, it, it sounds like it went well because I've heard just positive things, so good outcomes, everybody should be proud.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up what I realized. So you said nine seniors completed their credit recovery.
I think that's why.
How many we have to start? Or I should say, I mean, how many didn't graduate because of credit? It's like twenty-eight, thirty?
Sounds great.
You mean to, I guess.
Yeah, so I, I want to see what those questions, right? So what I'm looking for is total seniors who didn't graduate due to credit deficiency, seniors who were eligible to recover credits. And then we have just nine that, that did.
We, we can bring all of those numbers to sit, if that's, if that's what we typically do.
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm just interested because I think there is, like you were just talking about, that there's always an element of personal responsibility, familial responsibility that often goes by the right side in schools. But I think in our schools, we've made a concerted effort to restore it. But, you know, some of the time too, these are students who are struggling, right? We, you know, we have and sometimes still do put obstacles up in front of students academically that really aren't their fault per se. So I, I guess I just want to look at it holistically and say, okay, how many of these folks were even able to recover their credits? And then how many did? Because I think this is a really good snapshot of that, like we're, we're moving us as any potential problem. Just saying, how many of these kids showed up for sixteen days straight and did the work and didn't cause behavior problems as a percentage, right? So if it's nine out of twelve, I'll take seventy-five percent of these students who were struggling and unable to graduate were able to get it together and graduate. That seems pretty good to me, but if it's nine out of, you know, thirty, then I, I'm interested in maybe what we can do to strengthen the program. That's all. Anyone else? I have next the monthly financials. I know the budget committee just met, but I don't recall if you guys literally just went over this before I walked in. You did. So I don't know that you want to go over them at length, but feel free to add anything if you have anything.
We closed out one year, we opened up another year, so it's been busy times in the finance department. And everybody received the July, the two budgets. And right now, we're just trying to close out some of the purchase orders. We have the soft loads and find out what our balance will be.
Anyone have anything related to the monthly financials? Great, in that case, I will hear motion to approve it. Second, any additional special motion during the, all those in favor, please say aye. Monthly financials are done. Drop this behind, I should have. We have committee reports. Let's talk more about budget in Ellen's absence. You just did, but anything else related to budget, or can we just move right to that? Excellent. And anybody listening who maybe wasn't listening an hour ago, they're recording, will be available of that budget committee. Building committee, I know I asked you this. But tell us the good news that there are going to be students in intermediate school on the second.
There will be schools on the second. Dean and I had a huge meeting last week with the folks in ONG. Because it was a little concerned on our part wanted to make sure that we're going to move a little faster and not go to the last minute because teachers were welcome back today to set up their classrooms. And ONG responded wonderfully, it was a great meeting. They understood where we were coming from and they understood the need to speed things up so that I didn't have a heart attack more than Dean. So that was much appreciated, but they really stepped up and got everything ready so that Dean and his group can go in there rooms presentable and clean for our teachers who we welcomed back today. The punch list items were punch list items, you know, Zach shared, Dean and I at that meeting prior to Dean and I having the meeting, punch list at the meeting, I believe it was a thousand items. And by the end of that week, it was two hundred and fifty-seven, I believe is the exact number. So some of those, they are all going to be done, which is the good news. But those punch list items just have to wait and sometimes will be on second shift just from nature of the beast. But it does not deter us from moving in. Other piece that they were waiting for was something from the fire marshal, which happened last Friday as well. So things have been moving, I give Dean all the credit, he's at that trailer meeting with ONG daily. Last week we did have that big meeting and proud to say they really responded. As you drove in tonight, you saw the new laptop that was laid down. Funny though, because we had no name, and then the day they decided to lift the laptop, we got the name. So I don't know if they jinxed it, but it was kind of funny. So that day was kind of funny, Dean and I had to give them good chump. That circle is now ninety percent complete. I think there's some edging that has to be done in things of that nature. So really excited, it's exciting times to see everything happening. They had the crane out here again last week as well. I think Donna had the best crane. It was pretty cool. So we are, we're really excited. But yes, to answer your question, Mr. Corey, all buildings are ready to rock and roll.
Yeah, speaking of new buildings.
I have a couple of questions. Punch list first, so we set the table so everybody understands what happens with punch list. There's going to be a punch list, every teacher needs to know that, every administrator needs to know that. It's the largest school project, I think, in Connecticut history in terms of dollars and probably size. It may go on for longer than most people want, but it, there will be things that fellow from BL companies will continue to come up with and the things that teachers will find, and it's not going to happen, and it, and it's not going to go away in a month. I can guarantee everybody that, but ONG, I, I give everybody, Dean especially, and, and the superintendent, but Mario and Ed. I mean, they're going to, we're going to complete this project under budget with brand new fields. And I think the fire field has been turfed already and that the tennis courts have been paved. So they're moving at a fast pace. And they've, they're, they're about to the end, so fingers crossed, I don't want to jinx it, but I mean, people do need to know the punch list is going to, is going to be there and that they're going to get to it. I, I doubt very much ONG is going to let that drop given that they're less than a half a mile away from the building, but I mean, the guys did a great job and, and I, I think, so everybody knows, and it still doesn't surprise everybody, the building department's looking for more money to do more inspections. I don't know why and nobody seems to know why. I guess they're, they're coming more than they thought they would. It's a two-hundred-million-dollar project overall. But they want another eighty thousand dollars, I'm told. Hopefully we can avoid that. Pardon?
Yeah, the city always wants extra money from us, what's surprising?
Well, we already paid our, we already paid our building permit fee. I've never heard this before in my life, done two-hundred-plus projects. I've never had a talent, anybody back and say, we want, we want to charge you because there's more business than they have to take. we want to charge you because there's more business than you have to take.
That's a shame.
Well, yeah. I, I'm just letting everybody know, it may come up. It's been Mario and Ed are working on it very hard with the mayor to, to try to not have to pay it. But right now, it's something that's, that's, and maybe the superintendent has heard about that. I don't know. Maybe Dean has. But I think that's something that the building committee's gonna push back on. Otherwise, it's, it's, I mean, I'll tell you, it's amazing that it all got done. And we're actually over budget, it seems. So, and Dean is doing an amazing job. He really is. So, that's it.
I was just gonna add, and this is why I let Erica first, it's not that serious. But I will say, I just toured the new Denbury High School West, and they have a dedicated Board of Education meeting room in their new building. It's dedicated to and named for their current Board of Ed Chair. So I'm just throwing it out there.
That's not necessary.
For everyone's awareness.
The room, yes. The meeting of the room is unnecessary.
But in, in all seriousness, really thank you for your work on this. I know it's an intensive project. And everybody appreciates how much work you've done for us, especially coming into our team midway through it. And like, the issues that arose with this half of the building, I think everybody understands what Eric said, that sometimes you just, it takes a little bit to fix these problems. But the folks who have built this building for us are going to fix any issues that come up from this research.
Yes, they will. Or Mario's gonna have to put his stool belt on, one or the other.
Yeah. Okay. So next, we have some minutes. If there's no objection, I would hear both the regular meeting minutes from June twenty-fifth and a special meeting minutes from June tenth approvals as a single motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, edits to the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any post? Okay, those are done. Your motion to receive the subcommittee meeting minutes, again, if there's no objection, I would hear them all at once. That's facilities and technology on May fourteenth, budget on May fourteenth and June eleventh, policy on April second, school improvement on May seventh, and the building committee on July twenty-fourth. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Close. That's done. I will hear motion to receive consent agenda. There's a second. Second, something about Mr. Prudential. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Close. Are on to the second page. So we have a relatively small number of items for new business. But first up, we have field trips, both for the high school, one for the Model U N at Yale in January, and also for the high school ROTC, we'd like to go to Camp Laennic in September this year.
Yeah. Both of those are trips that we do annually. The history department won at Yale Haven in January. They're over back to the multi-day Model U N where the kids are like student delegates and that sort of thing. So it's something that we do every year. So they just wanted to get as soon as possible. We don't have student lists or anything yet. We just wanted to secure the needs and the approval. And then the ROTC, Camp Laennic, they do that as well. They take debts, all the debts. And they go through the training exercises and that sort of thing.
Overnight in-state trips. Anyone have any questions?
I have one question. Is, are they gonna have the, if you get the Model U N first year? Yes. The, the cost, do they ever fundraise for that? Or is this, is it always a three thirty per student? Is that normally what, how it's run from? Yes, it is. Yeah. Yeah, the principal, there is a principal's fund that sometimes they can, they can, yes. That was the only question I had.
Anyone else? None. I will hear motion. I mean, these are lumped together as nominally one agenda item with an A and B. So I can, as long as there's no objection, hear motion to approve at both simultaneously. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth by Mr. Knight, second advice to any discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Those are approved. Make sure you get Eric there. He's late. And then we have the board self-evaluation.
John, you just had a response.
Both school improvement and comes to be on the agenda tonight. I'm happy it is.
I think it was just, yeah, probably because we had it on there last year in August. So just carryover.
But if we're not, if we're not prepared to have the discussion, we can't take it.
Actually, I prepared to as chairman of school improvement, take input from anybody who over the next couple of weeks before the school improvement committee meeting, beginning of September, would like to say good things or bad things about the way we did it last year. Because by default, I think that worked well enough to just look at that.
I would agree. I, I agree. No, just as a member of the school improvement committee, I kind of like the way that we did it last year and how it came together. It really got everybody's things. The staff and everything. Yeah, I really, I really think so. I like the way it was done.
Further discussion at the school improvement committee meeting on September first, whatever.
Third.
But if you have input, you want to say before that, please.
Okay. That was nice and easy. Thank you, John. We have items for the upcoming agenda. We'll have all of the usual fair reports, meeting minutes, consent agendas, budget items. What else is anyone expecting or would like to dispense? Any committee this?
We're probably gonna have some pilot.
Lots of policy stuff. Yes. Anything the committees transmit to us, we'll also include. Then comments for the good of the order. Good luck as the first week of September arrives, that the buildings are full of students. Good luck to everybody with all the opening ceremonies and everything. We look forward to another fantastic school year. Mr. Knight?
Looking forward to another very, very big school year. And the diligence of all the new hires will up, who will be, who will be joining with us.
Thank you.
Two things. First, a pitch for the school improvement committee meeting in the beginning of September because we will be talking about self-evaluation, getting into the summer school results and processes a little bit more deeply. And if the state has taken the results off embargo, we'll start the discussion about the state results. The other thing is, to put some math before this meeting, this will be my sixty-seventh first day of school. Most of which as a teacher, half of which as a teacher. But other responsibilities too. It is a time for anyone who hasn't been through it, a great optimism, a great excitement. The world is just gonna open up for people in another couple of weeks. And I, I will give my best wishes to the people, especially the people who are new or who are undertaking new responsibilities. And there are several of those in the system this year. I wish those people a great school year.
Um, yeah, great, great meeting. Happy to be having all the students coming back and looking forward to the new building.
Good morning. Welcome back. Good luck. Work hard. Be safe.
You want me to go?
Good meeting. Thank you, everybody, for Dean, all the work we've done over the summer, everybody, all the work we've done over the summer. The consent agenda is huge. And you know, I also just, the, the appointments far away the reservations. Far away. I think there's a handful of reservations along with stuff pointed. And that's great news too. Michael, congratulations on being asked to participate again at the National Supermarket Conference and representing Torrington. Torrington's never, ever, ever been involved in that level of education at the national level. And it's just incredible that we're on the mountain and we have a great story to tell. So thank you for getting us there. It's a good meeting. Hopefully we'll see some of you in conversation next week. Let Miss Kisplo and his there. With bells on. This will be my last one. So unless I get invited in the future. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Eric?
Ditto this too. But also, this might be anecdotal, but the reason I brought up the issue of locals, there were, there were seven girls that, they do go to the gym and they come more or less often enough, from Torrington, graduated recently, that really do want to come back to Torrington. The new school, the new schools are a big deal. They've heard great things about what's going on. They, they've been in and out of the schools. They want to come back. Now they've all, and they probably didn't have enough experience, but they're going other places. Two are going to Simsberry, I'm told. But they, they told me they still want to come back and they're gonna keep, keep putting the resumes in because they want to be back in Torrington. They all, those six graduated within two years of each other. And I know Needo, Needo Stroud and Matty Elo and some others, kids are coming back. And that's a good thing because we need to pack the city hall with the people who live here that have a vested interest. So we have a little more political clout as well. But kids do want to come back and that's a good thing. So everybody's doing a great job.
Yeah, it's a good meeting and looking forward to the new school year, obviously. I just want to give a shout out to my crew. Students have really taken the level of what they do higher as a group are doing it, individually are doing it, you know. It's one district, one team is our motto and they've really stepped up. So hopefully when we walk into schools, everybody's gonna see, you know, the level that I'm speaking about.
Just to that, I'm sorry, the middle school, the intermediate school, the Torrington Intermediate School, it looks amazing. That school is, I don't, it looks like somebody kind of just got in the inside and like ran through the dishwasher and put it back. It really looks great. It, it looks amazing. The bathrooms, the hallways, everything. So thank you. I forgot about that.
Good meeting. And I'm just very excited for the wonderful, good meeting. Thank you, everybody. Here, everybody. I do want to do a shout out to Pal and Erica. I did have the pleasure of attending the backpack event over the weekend. And they gave out over eight hundred, almost a thousand backpacks. And just to see those smiling faces and that, that's what Mr. Kisplo was thinking of as like the world is your oyster. The happiness of the parents is very exhilarating. So looking forward to meet her. I just want to reiterate what Dean just said. Thank to the crew for all the hard work, like the actual physical sweat that's happened all summer. The schools look awesome. They'll go back more. You want them to go back. You feel like it's brand new.
Oh, my God. We have to go on a tour.
We really do. It actually sparkles. Like, it's beautiful. It's, it'll make you cry. So thank you. And I want to just give a shout out and a nice big welcome to Michelle Baker. It's so good to have you officially at the table. We're rocking and rolling. Yeah, excellent.
Mr. Listen, so echo what everyone said. But I also mentioned this, the board, you guys are part of the team. Everyone knows that at Central Office. Everyone knows that throughout the district. We couldn't do what we do without your support. And that never falls on any of our users. We actually appreciate it. We need it. It keeps us going. And I appreciate, appreciate it. So it's a thankless job that you all do. So I know we don't say it enough. I try to, but I know it's definitely. Thank you for all that you do and for our students and staff. We appreciate the support. And I know they do as well. And I know the community does, even though they won't come out and say it. Most times, we only hear the negative. But that's what we do. And we keep our focus on our students. And I will say that that is the main story. And we'll stick to that story. And I know all of you here as elected officials because you care about our students and the work that we do, Dean, Rachel, Donna, Michelle, myself, Sue, that's what it's all about. And that's why we have to be working around the clock. And we really, really can't wait to work on that. So I agree, Mr. Kisplo. It's always an exciting time, you know. I always give the analogy, shining the shoes the night before, making sure everything is ready to rock and roll. So I agree. It's an exciting time. So thank you, board members.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick shout out to Pal for their backpack giveaway and also to Friendly Institute Bank, who also did a backpack and school supplies giveaway. I was there. Lots of happy kids and families. I just think it's really good for everybody that are, can even get so many organizations and volunteers who have the same mission to help our families and students. And they don't compete with each other and they're not territorial. They just want to make sure that all the kids get all the supplies that they need. And with that, I will think, oh, go with the future meetings. Wednesday, September third, a Torrington, we have school improvement at five thirty and policy at six or immediately after. Wednesday, the tenth of September, also at Torrington, we have facilities and technology at five thirty and budget immediately after or six P M. And then we have, of course, our regular board event meeting, September the twenty-fourth, right here, the T A, oh, I'm sorry, it's not, right? Or the type of?
Right.
Okay, okay. So just down the hall, just down the hall.
That's your official meeting room.
That's our reunion.
That's right. All right. I'll believe you when I say the sign.
That's a Dean question.
And with that, I will hear a motion to.
Someone.
Second.
Second.